Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. The first order of business is the approval of minutes from our May 23 meeting, which we all very promptly received. If there are no corrections or additions, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes.
I'll approve.
Move the mini second. Here?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next orders of business are public hearings and meetings and petitions. I have had a request to review case 2023-7 and 2023-14. So if there's no objection from the board, I'm going to take them out of that order. This is for the convenience of the petitioner. So 2023-7 is at 43 to 45 Blossom Street. The petitioner is 43 Blossom Street Development. And 2023-14 has a 305 Eastern Avenue, and the petitioner is 305 Eastern Avenue LLC. And here is the representative of the petitioner.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Ross, on behalf of the petitioner. I don't have my glasses tonight, so I apologize. So I'm going to try to just look at the screen. So essentially, this project that you see here is an existing four-family structure, and there was a fire on the property. My clients have acquired the property and looking to convert it from a four to a six-family. The bedroom count will not change whatsoever. So it's still going to be the same amount of bedrooms, but it's now going to be split apart over six units. They're also doing a lot on the aesthetics of the building. So, John, do you have the, if you scroll down, it has the existing structure?
I'm sorry, which one are you looking for?
The existing structure showing the current condition. Yeah. So if you look at the building, this is what it looks like now. We're actually decreasing the height, and it's going to look just like this. So these are the first two floors of the building. The third floor will match what's existing. So it's actually going to be more aesthetically pleasing in the front, and the porches are coming off the back. So the footprint of the building itself will not change. It's actually decreasing a little bit, but more aesthetically, it'd be more uniform to what the current house is, should be, as the other two floors. As far as parking's concerned, John, can you scroll up to the parking plan, please? Okay, well, this is great. Can you, actually, can you go the next one? You just passed it, sorry. Yes. So you can actually see the house now, how it is, like a domer. So now it would be matching what's here, but all brand-new. The porches will come off and so forth. It already has a parking lot in the back, on the side. So if, we actually took this one parking space off, added more green space. It has more than enough parking to suffice what's being proposed. And then we have a green space in the back of the building. So you can see this, how it's set up. So it's going to look more uniform. And see these porches in the back? I'm not sure if you can see them, but there's porches in the back. Those are going to be removed. And if I could just get to the site plan, John, please? Yes. And as far as site plan, right now, this building has no runoff water, stormwater containment. What's being proposed now is six Coltech systems in the driveway to absorb any groundwater that comes stormwater off the building, which is being proposed. We took parking spaces away from the front, and we put parking spaces in the back of the property, and we added more green space here and here. So now it's, remember before you had decks here? The decks are now gone. So this affords more green space and also more green space in the front and in the rear of the property, as far as that's concerned. And I want to specify, as far as zoning relief is concerned, you can see that everything is compliant, other than the existing structure, the front yard setback, it's pre-existing non-conforming. They're not making it bigger, it's just, it's a special permit because it's already there. The only relief really being sought by variance, even though that's not in the purview of the board, is just to talk about that the amount of units, square footage per unit. That's the only trigger, because we're going from four to six. But nothing's really changing as far as bedroom counts. It's going to be a better building, and I will note now the building will be fully sprinkled, fire alarm, in today's codes, because it's going to be a full gut and addition building. That's essentially what's being proposed, and I will note that this is something that we worked hand-in-hand with the city and the planning department before, coming before this board, for comments and what have not on this property. And I'll answer any questions the board may have.
What part of the building is existing to remain?
The first two stories are pretty much staying the same, and the third floor is going to match the first two stories aesthetically, except the rear porches will be coming down.
Okay. And you just, what part of the building was impacted by the fire?
It was, it went from the top floor going down on the inside. There's no occupancy in the building currently. And I did speak to neighbors. They were, I'm not sure if they're here, but they were at the ZBA meeting, and they saw the changes and everything that's being proposed, and they're very happy that how it's being broken apart, because right now it's so many bedrooms, and the way it was being operated prior to my client's ownership was almost like rooms being rented. And now, this is something more that they want to see, and they like how the aesthetic of the buildings can be all done over, sprinkled building, and the parking, and more green space. So if they're here, it's great, but I do want to tell the board this.
So are you reducing the amount of paved area?
Yes. And we'll be taking a portion of the paved area to do stormwater Coltech systems, which will have to have a different surface on that, for that stormwater.
Are the, are you going, are these condos or rentals?
I believe they're going to be rentals.
Are any of the rentals planned to be affordable?
No. It's only six units. It's basically working on the same footprint.
Has the butter, sorry, has the right side of butter been made aware of what's coming?
Yes. All the butter's made aware, and we've spoken to, I've spoken personally with three butters on this, and we showed them the plans, and we didn't even make changes to it. They actually liked what was being proposed, and they liked what my client was doing, and they were very happy with what's being turned about. I think the only question someone had was if the tree in front of the property was going to remain, and they brought that up, and I said, "That's really not our purview, because it's on city property."
But every action will be made to save the tree?
Yeah, we don't control the tree. It's sidewalk property, so, so we told them, "We're not looking to rip a tree down. It's there. We're just working on adding the story above, fixing, you know, replacing it."
I spend a lot of time in that park that's behind it, Eden Street Park, and I always see the boarded-up windows. And I have to say that I like the proposal, and I think that this is kind of a best-case scenario for it, so I'm pleased to see it.
Thank you.
I'll second it. I actually live pretty close, and I think it was January 16th I actually saw that giant fire, and it was quite, it was quite a fire, so I'm also excited.
Thank you.
That it's all getting cleaned up.
Thank you.
I actually do want to ask something, because it is a flat, because it is going to be flat on top, is it possible that the top of the property could be painted white?
I'm sure they can paint it white, because I don't think they're putting solar. If they put solar, then you'd want it black, but if they're not doing solar, you'd do white. But that wouldn't be an objection, that it'd be painted white if they don't do solar. I think if they do solar, they want it to be black, because it absorbs more heat.
Yep. That makes sense to me.
If, could we add it with a condition that the, that the developers consult with the city about heat mitigation, white roofs, that sort of thing? Could we approve it with the condition that the developers consult with the city to do an appropriate plan for heat mitigation with either white roofs or, you know, some sort of a reasonable plan? Like, I would, I wouldn't want to discourage them from doing solar, just to have a white roof, of course. You know what I mean?
Exactly.
But whatever the city finds appropriate.
Yep. And it will be subject to the new stretch energy code anyways, that just came about. So the whole building would be subject to the new zoning, stretch energy code.
That can be done.
Okay. So then I'll make a motion to, to recommend this to the ZBA with the standard conditions as applicable, with a design review, landscaping plan, exterior lighting plan, that's international dark sky compliant, good quality opaque fence along the frontage at the existing parking space to partly screen the parking, good quality fence along the westerly property line, no rental or lease for less than 12 months, tenants of the building will be ineligible to participate in the sticker program, take all precautions to preserve the street tree, and to work with the city to talk about heat mitigation and energy efficiency.
Quick question on the actual agenda. It says 43 to 45 Bloomingdale Street. Can you confirm that that's actually Blossom Street?
It should be, it should be Blossom.
On the condition sheet, John?
It should be Blossom, I'm sorry.
It should be Blossom.
Okay. In that case, I'll second it.
The second should be?
The motion was made and seconded to approve with the conditions.
With the conditions, right. Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ready and announced.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may proceed with Eastern Ave. John, did Rick send you the, you have that, right? If I may, Mr. Chairman, again, and members of the board, Anthony Ross, on behalf of the petitioner. This was a project that was before you in the past, maybe two, three months ago, about Rivian taking a portion of the building and so forth. Since then, we've sat down with John and also Carl in planning regarding, because they rezoned this district and had a potential, you know, future use. My client also has engaged Rivian, and I might understand they do have an agreement in place subject to this, and one of the things to show a commitment, and hoping that this property can be redeveloped in the future for even other uses. What we're seeking for approval for this use is only limited for five years. So that way, if everything is good in five years, and we have another operator, great. If it isn't, then we come back before the board. Also, what we did is, we limited the amount of space, so if you're entering, I'm sorry if I'm blocking people. Actually, if I could. Sorry. Thank you. So as you know, this is the entryway here. So when working with the city, we created a green, a green space. This is all paved, so we're going to create a whole green area, and this is a pretty large area. So we're looking at this as, if someone does come and looking to put a structure on a site, we can incorporate this as a site to put a structure on it here. These are the stored vehicles from Rivian, which are, again, you won't see these from the street, because of the way it's angled, and these are the stored vehicles. By, by putting them in this manner, we created more space to add a potential future site here. And this is all paved, it'll now be changed. And this is the actual roadway coming in, which will also be paved, and also have, we also have a lighting plan coming through, and this will be gated, if someone's asking on this entrance. So they'll be coming in and out of this area. This is a two-way lane. The actual existing building itself will still have over 40 spaces for the building. The current owner of the property has to stay there, I believe, until June of next year. So what we're doing, so what, we're going to, once they vacate the property, Rivian will be taking a portion of the building to operate their repair auto, the same manner they've done in the other locations, and training at this site. They expect anywhere between five to 10 employees to come in. On the other side, they even have, mind you, send even more than that, and it's actually done really well, and they usually get people, Chelsea residents, because it's really more, you know, not transit located, so most of the people that come in are from there, and they train them. So, and then what's going to happen on this building here, Rivian's only going to take a portion of it, we're going to redo the whole entire building. And we're going to do the exterior of the building, windows of the building, once that tenant, which is the owner, because he occupies the building, moves out. So we're actually going to redo the building, and then we're going to have probably 90% of the building available for future development, hopefully lab space, biotech space, what have not, which is why we wanted to keep as much parking as we can for the building. So we worked with the city in not having this be a longer period of time, so if there is a development that can come around with the current new zoning, we have a system in place that a good portion of the building will be available, and another site could be available. At the same time, have my client acquire the property, put Rivian in there to solve one of their problems, and use that revenue to redo the whole building and the site and the landscape. And so this, we worked hand-in-hand with the city, multiple meetings with John and with Carl, who helped with the zoning, to put something here that actually works for everybody. And that's pretty much what we got here, and Rivian would be the user on this site. And I'll loudly answer any questions the board has.
Yeah. Compared to your proposal, and I think April, this is a giant upgrade. Everything is super, is extremely clear. I just have a couple of questions. I see that you plan on putting up a sign. Could you please clarify exactly where that sign is going?
I don't think it's been set in stone. I think if it would, it'd probably be somewhere over here.
Okay.
And that would be subject to, signage is always controlled by purview of this, with John, and wherever they want it, and how they want it to look, but I would assume it'd be right where you come in, right there, because they'd be the main user initially.
Cool. And, and could you please remind us the breakdown of parking spots for Rivian, for airport parking?
There's no more airport parking.
Oh, there isn't airport parking?
The city, the city did not want ride, you know, parking rides, so we got rid of parking ride altogether.
Okay.
So it's going to be just basically new vehicles being stored at this location. My eyesight's bad, but I want to say it's 44 spaces, or 45 spaces for the actual building, and I believe the stored spaces, if I read it correctly, I believe it's 142, I believe, on it. It's the same amount that was originally proposed, but now, because they're really going to be storing new vehicles, we can just basically compact them all in and not have driving lanes, because nobody's going to be driving them and taking them. And that gave us the flexibility to have more green space in the front, and also as a possible future developer, because one of the, one of my client believes that if someone does take a good portion of this building, they may want to put something here. It may not be enough to do what they need to do here. So that's why we set that aside as a future development site.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve with the general conditions, which...
Can I just have, I have one quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm wondering how this, how this works, if it's in the airport overlay district, John? Because it no longer has airport parking, so how is it allowable, I guess?
It's not going to be airport parking. This is parking storage for the Rivian company.
But if, this is still zoned as airport-related overlay district, right? So doesn't it have to be airport-related in order to be in this spot?
No, it, although the zoning allows for storage and repair of vehicles in that, in that district.
Okay.
And I did state, right, this is part of there, is Rivian's operating the repair, the storage here. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I missed that, sorry.
Well, I would just like to recommend that the paving material be as light a color as possible, for the same reasons we wanted the light roof, because this is a vast area. That might even be a requirement within the airport overlay district. But the idea is to not contribute any more to the heat island effect than what's already happening with these large paved areas.
Yeah, the site is currently fully paved. We're actually going to be unpaving a huge portion, that's a large portion, in the front. We're going to make that all green space, so we're going to have to, not only get rid of the soil, we're going to have to get rid of the actual asphalt and about seven inches underneath it, and bring new topsoil on. But so they-
Yeah, there's two aspects to, there's the permeability, but then there's the reflectance of light. So the lighter the pavement, the better.
We could even-
Are you requesting that they, that they repave or they paint it, because it's existing?
You're going to repave.
Are you going to repave?
I wish I had the answer, because I don't, the engineer is in Lynn, but I thought they, I could have sworn that was already repaved. If it, if it wasn't repaved, and I could talk to the city about this, because it's only really going to be for storage of vehicles in those, the large section, maybe a crushed stone product could be put down instead of pavement, and I don't think my client would probably have a problem with that, it'd be a lot cheaper than-
It shouldn't be anything that is any difference in cost.
Yeah.
It's just an awareness that a lighter color is better for the environment.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're building a green space that no one in the city has access to, because it's gated?
Well, it's, it's private property, so if someone-
I get it. So basically, you're just building a green, a green space that we can walk by.
I think the green space was done because the city wanted to block-
So I understand why it was done.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, but you're still building something that doesn't benefit the city in any way, shape, or form. And I still think there's a lot of ifs in this project. If someone wants to buy the space, if this, you know, I understand-
No, my client has an agreement to purchase the space subject to this approval, and the revenue to the city by, by tax dollars alone, by the acquisition price and the money that's going to be put in, is pretty extensive.
Yeah, I, I understand the project, I, but sticking a front lawn in something, you know, in a, in a space, in a city that, in a part of the city that I think has great potential, I, I just, even in a five-year plan, you know, we, the city has no recourse, it's a private property, you could just put, you could put astroturf out there, for all I know, so I-
We, we can't.
Well.
Because one of the conditions is that it has to be landscaped, approved, green, shrubs, plantings, to a T of how they want it to look.
Yeah, I, I just can't, I seriously can't approve this, because I just think we're locking up a very valuable piece of parcel for five years, so it's turned into a giant parking lot.
So my question to that is, it's, what is our alternative? We aren't going to be constructing affordable, affordable housing. We aren't going to be constructing condos. It is an industrial area, and this is a super industrial purpose in an upcoming industry.
And I will state that I did speak to the person who helped with creating the zoning, and they're quite aware of what's going on in today's economics, and nothing anytime soon's probably going to-
I, I get it. I understand. I know I'm a-
That's why we-
I know I'm in a very minority opinion of this. I, I understand, but I think some of it is that you need to think of more than just one year or five years, you need to think of like 10, 12 years. This is a very, I think this is an incredibly valuable piece of property. I think there's other things that we can do with it. It's in a very industrial area, but some people, I, I just don't, I just don't think putting a green lawn in front of somebody and saying, "Okay, we may have a biotech come in, we may have a lab come in, we may have," you know, I get it, I just don't, and I understand that zoning board approved it. I understand all, I, I get it, I'm a minority voice, but I just think sticking a piece of green grass in front of somebody and not changing anything else doesn't, doesn't think it's wrong. So that's just my opinion. So I cannot include conscious vote for this, no matter what the parking color of the pavement is, or what it's made out of.
I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty soothed by the prospect that the planning board is going to be able to review everything that's going on in 2028. And I think that's going to be an opportunity to say, "This property is absolutely trashed, it's gross, it isn't serving Chelsea." But I think this is a great short-term plan, considering it's, it is an ugly plot.
Thank you.
I couldn't find the city recommendation. Is there, is there a recommendation from the city on this?
As the, as counselor indicated, he did meet with me and with Carl, and this plan was devised in consultation with him, and both Carl and I are comfortable with it. For, you know, list of conditions, I put five years, the counselor is comfortable with that as well. The board, the two departments are recommending approval.
Okay.
As Eric indicated, what's the alternative? At least, what's the alternative? This is better than what is there now.
My recommendation is that I'd like to make a recommendation to approve with the standard conditions, including the paving material, meeting the SRI level that's-
What do you call it?
That's referred to LEED, the minimum threshold within LEED should tell you where that needs to be. And that it's subject to a design review, that the driveway stops at the egress at Eastern Ave, that a special permit is issued to the applicant and is not transferable without the public process and the ZBA's review, and that the special permit is valid for no more than five years.
Yes.
A second?
Okay, made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you. If I may say something, when the special permit not transferable, my client, I want to make sure I say this right, he hasn't closed on the property yet, so it's currently under the owner's, he's a petitioner, so he'll be the owner, they mean that, right? The future owner.
But he's the petitioner.
Correct.
So it'll, the decision will be made out to the petitioner?
To the tenant.
Petitioner, yes. I believe he's the petitioner.
I mean, petitioner and the property owner.
Yeah, because the property owner's the petitioner. I just want to make it very clear that it will be the petitioner who will be the actual future owner, because not the owner now.
I'll word smith it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that for later on, because he hasn't closed on it yet.
Right. But the same standards would be accountable to either one, right?
Yeah, I just want to, when it says it was not transferable, I'm saying if it's under the owner's name, the owner's going to be selling it to my client, and I want to make it very clear that my client, who is buying the property, as long as it's in his name, we have no objection, because he's the, going to be the one buying the property. That's why when the non-transferable part, I just wanted to, on the record, be clear. And I think John understands what I'm saying. It's more legalese to make sure that, you know, because that's what he's buying to be able to do that.
You're going to massage the language, John?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, and everyone have a happy fourth.
The next case on the agenda is case 2023-9 at 83 and 8, through 85 Library Street. The, um, next case on the agenda is case 2023-9 at eighty-three and eighty, through eighty-five Library Street. We also have a, another case, and yet another, also on Library Street. Uh, so with the board's permission, and my proposal is to listen to all three of them at the same time. And I've asked John if he would just give us a quick department overview of exactly what's going on here.
So, the, uh, board received, uh, the case 2023-09, eighty-three, eighty-five Library Street first, uh, which is actually a piece of a parcel that is, uh, also owned by the owner of eighty-one Library Street. Ideally, all three parcels would have been provided in one, um, application. However, that was not the case. I pointed it out in my report. And, um, the applicant's attorney, um, recognized that, uh, just prior to the ZBA meeting, it was, we don't, um, it was continued to allow for the applicant, uh, the applicant to send in the eighty-one Library Street, uh, application so they can both be, um, determined, uh, together. Uh, you'll have to hear them as two separate cases and make two separate votes on them, but effectively, they are one application. Do you agree?
Accurate. Thank you, thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chairman, and through to the members, uh, for the record. Uh, my name is Richard Linds. I'm an attorney with the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. Uh, I'm representing Maria Texera, uh, who was with us here this evening regarding the applications that are before the planning board. Um, it's probably best to jump, if we could jump to the initial survey plan, John, uh, to explain what precisely we're trying to do here. Perfect. Um, so I could just approach here. So as John had indicated, we do have, um, three applications technically because we are proposing two separate two-family dwellings, uh, that are located adjacent to the existing, uh, single-family dwelling that is, uh, on a separately assessed parcel. Uh, because these properties have come into common ownership, they're determined merged under Chapter 48 for purposes of zoning. Uh, since the existing building, uh, would not be in conformity with the Chelsea zoning code, um, current zoning would, uh, suggest that all of this parcel together is now one parcel despite the fact that they were, uh, held separately. So therefore, in order to proceed with our proposal for the two two-families, uh, we, in effect, need the subdivision of the property from the existing single-family, even though they are, uh, technically two separate lots. That would leave the existing, uh, structure at twenty-one hundred square feet, which is where it sits today. Uh, and then we're creating two separate lots with respect to the proposed, uh, two-two families. Uh, perhaps we could jump back, John, just so we can get a look at the, uh, red, yeah. Maybe one, two more. Go forward. It's just a context view of the neighborhood. Maybe the street view would be helpful. Yeah, so that, if we can jump back one. Thanks. So existing conditions, uh, there is parking located on those, uh, that vacant portion of the lot that's located adjacent to the single-family. Uh, we would propose, uh, to redevelop that if we could just jump forward to the renderings, John, and they can go through the floor plans. So what we're proposing is two, uh, two-family dwellings, and, um, these would be townhouse-style, three stories each, uh, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, uh, with an unfinished basement. Um, they would be, uh, attached, the, each of them would be attached. As I said, townhouse-style. We are proposing a common driveway, uh, in between the buildings that would access a parking area located to the rear of both of these properties. Uh, there would be two parking spaces for each of those units. Uh, they would be arranged in a tandem fashion, so each unit would have a, uh, two tandem spaces. Um, and if we wanna jump down, I think we do have a landscape and site plan as well that we can review. Maybe just, perfect. Uh, so as I said, we do have that common access, uh, up the middle, uh, with the four parking spaces, uh, located as tandem spaces, eighteen by nine each. Uh, we do, uh, locate the edge of that, uh, parking space towards the rear of the property uh, within about, uh, two-and-a-half feet of the rear property line. Uh, a couple of the issues that were raised during the, um, review by planning were, uh, the first was the location of retaining wall. There was a retaining wall to the rear of the property. Um, and with respect to any work that we do, we fully understand that that will be a requirement that we have to address as part of our construction. So, um, our client will, uh, retain a structural engineer, and will obviously work with our budding property owner to address any of the, uh, structural issues that need to be addressed in connection with that. I believe the other questions, uh, were concerning the, uh, previous pavers and a maintenance plan for that. So certainly, uh, we can provide that, supply that to the city in connection with any permitting, uh, to ensure that that is addressed for, uh, ongoing maintenance of the pavers. Um, and I believe there was a request that would also be included as a restriction or a covenant within future deeds, which we have no issue with as well. Um, if we wanna, I'm not sure if the board wants to see the floor plans for the units, but we can run through those as well, or if there's any specific questions. I know it's more site plan specific.
Could we see the greater context? I, I, this site plan doesn't show that budding buildings on the left and right.
I, I'm sorry. I apologize.
She wants to see where the buildings are.
Okay.
Side yard setback on the far side of the group of lots. And how far, see, on the left side there, I can see the outline of the existing building.
Sure.
Um, the one to the left of, uh, Ms. Texera's property?
Yes.
But on the far right, there's no outline. So my question is, how far is the face of your proposed building at number eighty-five from the abutters?
Oh, from the abutters on this side. I apologize. I don't, I don't see that on the, uh, the plan. So, I do see, I, I do see a five-point-one feet from the property line, but I don't, I'm sorry. That's not shown on the plan.
Can we ask the applicant, is there a building in that, uh, parcel?
On the far left?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
There's a yard there, um, and then there's the property. So, at the end there, yep, there's a, a yard. Um, and then, I don't know if you're familiar with where the playground is. The property is more like across the street from the playground. So there's a, a big yard between that and the next house.
Okay, I'll, I'll just explain my concern, and this came up on a similar proposal. But how, if, the people who live in this structure, presumably there's a building there, what will be the distance between their windows and this new structure? Because this would be non-conforming with the zoning requirement, which is what, eight feet?
Or the building height.
Okay, I thought I saw on the chart that it was eight feet. So that's five feet. So, we're really encroaching on the neighbors' bedroom windows. Um, so I guess the question is, have they been made aware of this? And do you have any letters of support from your surrounding, um, owners?
So I believe, John, this is still a portion of the property. Um, and then we have, yep, that's probably the better view right there. Hard to see with the, um, with the tree cover, but we do see some parking and some open space to the left side of the property.
So the very far right of the screen, is that the edge of a building?
Yeah, so I, I, I think it just got cut off, so I do, I can see that, yep.
So, am I correct in saying that this is the edge of the second two-family here? And that the abutters have a parking space before the building?
I believe that's, that's accurate, correct. I'm sorry, it doesn't show the property line, but yes.
Okay, so, so we'll have a structure here, a structure here, a structure here, and this is open?
Yes.
Okay, that's-
It, it appears that there's a smaller structure to the rear of the property, um, adjacent.
Okay, well, the concern is that, you know, people say have a sixteen-foot gap between their facade and the neighbors suddenly have a, you know, eight-foot gap, so it's-
Yeah, I try, I mean, I do trust it's more, more than eight feet, but if there's a specific setback that you're looking for, then-
Well, the setback would be what would be required. So it looks like it's five-point-one feet right now, is what's being proposed.
Correct, from the property line, correct.
So I can see where the fence is. It just, it's hard to gauge how far away the nearest structures.
I, I apologize, and I should've asked our survey to include that.
Kind of changing topic here, but, uh, can you confirm if these are gonna be rentals or condos for sale?
So, we discussed this at the Board of Appeal, and I did have a chance to talk to my client. These are intended for her family, so they're, these may be organized as condos for ownership for purpose of her family, um, but they're intended to be for her family only. So, whether they're recorded with a master deed and then owned individually as units, this is, these are intended for her family, correct? Yeah.
So, a family that can purchase?
Correct, yep.
And what, what's the story with trash?
So if we can jump down to the plan, um, I think we have the floor plan. So I believe we have area towards the rear of the property in between the parking, the parking space in the back of the building that we can put enclosure for trash. Uh, there is space in the basement, but I don't know that we necessarily wanna keep stor, or trash storage in the basement, but we, it's an unfinished basement, so we would have the ability to include it in the basement if that was preferred. Um- So Ms. Texera's providing me with the street view of that area. I can share that with the board. It does look pretty significant between-
Yeah, she just alleviated any concerns.
Okay, I apologize.
So it's currently a vacant lot.
Yeah, so I, I believe, I mean, the-
Yeah, that's good news. Thank you.
The surveyor, for lack of, you know, putting it on the plan, should've probably included the close building, but I don't think he actually went that far over on the, on the plan itself.
Thank you. No concerns.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize.
Is the owner planning on installing, s, installing solar panels?
I, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm actually a little hard of hearing today. My, it's, apologies, it blocked my ears, so I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's completely fine. Uh, I utter sort of, uh, if anything is un, uh, unclear, I'll, I'll say it twice. It's completely okay. Um, are you planning on installing, installing solar panels?
Good question. Um, I don't believe there's a plan currently, but, uh, we'll cer, we can certainly look at that, obviously for energy efficiency and savings. Um, if that's something the board would like us to look at, we could certainly consider that.
Yeah, um, I'd say if you aren't planning on installing solar, um, if it is a flat top, I'd propose adding a condition that we, that we, um, that we, uh, paint the top white-
Understood.
In order to-
Yep.
Reflect energy off of it.
Absolutely.
Cool Chelsea down.
It's good sense. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve, um, the standard conditions and, um, as long as it's, it's subject to a design review and that the plans for the retaining wall are submitted, um, once that's been complete. Um, and that the tenants of the building will not be eligible for the resident sticker program. Um, that there's a stormwater maintenance plan, a landscaping plan, and that the exterior lights are dark sky compliant. And, and the, uh, white, either a white roof or, um-
Yeah.
It does look like it's optimal for solar panels.
Yeah, it is a pretty optimal situation for that, I think. So, um, is it okay if we add it on as a condition?
Cool.
And, um, let's start on as a condition?
I apologize. Was the condition to have solar panels or alternatively, if no solar panels, then, wait, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
One oppose?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Too big.
Did you wanna talk?
Too big. They're building a four-bedroom apartment. Too big. The study is an extra bedroom.
All right.
So, that was eighty-three, eighty-five. You need to do a vote on eighty-one Library Street as well.
Right.
I'll say, I just think you guys are building, considering how much housing Chelsea needs, you're building six houses, you're building a four-bedroom house, even though it's called a study, which is just another way to get around building a four-bedroom house. I think with the space that you guys allocated, you could build much, you could build affordable housing on this property. You could do a lot of stuff on this besides building six, you know, townhouses for people who won't be able to afford to live there, and the residents won't be able to afford to live there. It's, you know, and I think the tandem parking is tedious and hard to deal with, but, uh, if that was the only issue that I have, but this is, you know, these, these units are gonna go for over half a million dollars, easily, gonna go over half a million dollars, if not into the six to seven-hundred thousand dollars. That's way out of the bench of anybody here. And I, you know, this is, and it's on library, you know, no, I can't, I can't justify it. It's really hard for me to justify it. So, sorry.
Through the chair, if I could just clarify for the record. I don't, I don't believe it was six units. I believe it's two, two families, four units total.
Okay, four units.
Um, with three bedrooms, and these are intended for ownership by the family, so while the value may be there.
I underst, I, I understand what you're building, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure they're beautiful. But if you look at the floor plan, you guys have the world's biggest laundry room known to mankind in this building. The floor plans are interesting. I just want affordable housing in, in some way, faith of shorm. And by skirting that issue, you, you know, I, I can't approve it. Sorry. It's like, this is a very big property, and you could have done some other stuff with it. I underst, you know, I get it. It's just my opinion, lonely as it is.
Well, I, I, I do appreciate the, um, respect for the existing conditions in the surrounding neighborhood. So that's, you know, also a concern of ours as a planning board. And it's a, um, tight lot for this, you know, for, for the driveway and everything else we're trying to do. So, um, anyway, it's, um, not as disruptive to the abutters as something larger. So I, uh, commend that.
Thank you.
We, you need to make a motion and a second on the eighty-one Library Street case, case twenty, twenty-three thirteen.
John, we-
So-
The plans we've been looking at were just eighty-three and eighty-five, correct?
There's eighty-one.
Yeah, I, I think we need a little more information.
The existing house, it's an existing residence where the applicant lives, and it's going to remain.
Okay, so remind me what we're approving, what, what is non-conforming?
Uh, the non-conformity will be lot size and- The non-conformity will be lot size and setbacks and pro, and parking as well.
Why, sorry, can you explain why it's before us if nothing is changing?
Because this is all, because they are, all these parcels are owned by one owner. Under zoning, they get merged for zoning purposes to meet the minimum dimensional regulations.
So, after this hearing, it all becomes one parcel?
No. So, after this hearing, they will be separated, but in, in doing so, they are making the existing structure more non-conforming, or the existing parcel and structure, non, more non-conforming. Therefore, it is all technically, it should have all come as one application to you.
Okay, so, number sixty-one will park on this street, is that, is that the assumption?
Number eighty-one, correct. So, we're not proposing to change anything with respect to the building itself. The only change is because we are proposing to develop a lot next to it, and as John had said, there's this fiction of merger, that even though they're separate lots, they could have been even probably sold separately at different times, they just happen to come in common ownership, and once that happens, they're one, it's considered one lot. So, you know, even for purposes of the assessor, we're not really changing anything with the lot. There is parking on a separate lot, which I don't even believe under your zoning is permissible without some type of special permit anyhow. So, for all intents and purposes, it stays exactly the same for, for the lot at eighty-one. The only change is that we are now trying to utilize portions of the lot eighty-three, eighty-five for the development, which requires approval.
So, we're not increasing the load on street parking? That remains the same?
No, and, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think when eighty-one was originally built, and it sat on the lot that it sits on, it didn't have parking, so technically, it's pre-existing non-conforming with respect to parking already. It just happens to utilize the parking next, next door for par, for off-street parking.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve number eighty-one, Library Street.
I'll second it.
You are provided with conditions. Standard conditions as applicable, a stormwater management plan, a landscaping plan, and exterior lighting plan that's international dark sky compliant.
For eighty-one as well?
For eighty-one.
On the lighting?
Yeah.
Okay, made and seconded?
Assuming you're making changes to the lighting, if not, I'll parage the...
Yeah, I just, there may not be lighting already on the exterior, so, but to the extent there is, I understand.
I'm sorry, who ma, who seconded?
Eric.
Eric?
Yeah, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case number ninety-three dash ten at one-twenty-two Warren Avenue. The petitioner is one-twenty-two Warren Avenue VG LLC.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, and through to the members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Lins, attorney, with the business address of two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. With, with me is Richard Beliveau, who is the owner's representative for one-twenty-two Warren VG LLC. We probably can jump down a couple of slides before we talk a little bit about the context. Thank you, John. Probably a good place to start, right here, excellent. So, this proposal involves a pre-existing three-family dwelling, which we're seeing here on the screen, on a roughly fifteen thousand, a little over fifteen thousand square foot lot. Our proposal would subdivide the lot and allow for the creation of a separate lot for a new two-family dwelling. That two-family dwelling would have a total of four parking spaces. We would also be creating three parking spaces for the existing three-family dwelling that do not presently exist. This is intended, are we intending home, homeownership, so for the proposed... Yeah, for the two, the new two-family, that would be intended for homeownership, so these would be individual condo units. The existing three-family, which is presently occupied, would remain as a rental property. If we want to jump down to, I believe we have our site plan and our landscape plan as well. Probably a good place to start. So, as you can see, we would divide the property relatively close to the middle. The driveway would be located on the new lot, with the existing structure located here. The four parking spaces located to the rear of the proposed two-family, and then the three parking spaces located to the rear of the three-family, which would be accessed through the driveway, and a common easement would be put in place for, for those three parking spaces. Some members of this board may remember this proposal, it was before the board some time ago. We were asked to take a look at, based upon comments that we heard about the drainage, since this does substantially slope from Warren Ave down towards the back, and how we would deal with drainage on-site. We have retained RJ O'Connell Associates who come up with a pretty comprehensive plan to handle drainage as well as the stormwater, and I know that we have provided that to the planning department with respect to the issues that were raised previously at the last hearing. If we want to jump down to the next slide, I think we do have our landscape plan as well. So, we are maintaining a good amount of green space, both behind the existing three-family and as well as the, the new two-family. And as you can see, the parking spaces are oriented, again, for the spaces behind the proposed two and three that are behind the existing home. We did hear comments both the last time or before the board, as well as most recently, that parking in this area is a concern. There currently is no on-street or off-street parking for the existing three-family, so this would actually introduce three parking spaces, and we are providing an adequate number of parking spaces for the proposed new two-family. With respect to the drainage and runoff, those are concerns that we certainly heard last time as well, and we believe that the system that is being proposed by O'Connell would certainly not only improve the current situation with the amount of stormwater runoff that goes to the back of the property, but also create certainly some substantial mitigation for what, what currently occurs on the site. We do understand that there were, you know, comments and concerns from neighbors about the existing property itself. Our client has owned it for a little over a year, and we are certainly committed to working with the neighborhood on addressing those concerns. But as I said, the chief concerns that we did hear were about parking and stormwater runoff, and we want to ensure that, you know, I think going, going through the process that we went through to ensure that we can address those. I did have a narrative, our engineer could not be tonight, but we, be here tonight, but we asked him to give us a quick summary of just some of the mechanisms for the stormwater management and the drainage system. So, he indicates the runoff from the roof of the new building, and half the roof of the existing building are, would be directed to one infiltration system behind the new building. That infiltration system has an overflow connected to a second infiltration system, which is located beneath the parking area. The second infiltration system would accept runoff collected by a catch basin in the new parking area as well. And then there's an overflow outlet control structure that diverts any additional runoff down to a level spreader at the rear of the lot, which is essentially a perforated pipe set in a deep bed of stone, and then the runoff would infiltrate into that stone trench. The stone trench would extend to the surface, and therefore, the, any additional excess runoff would, that, that actually was, was going beyond the existing system, would then only flow downhill, and that was, that would only be the residual that wasn't captured by the existing or the proposed infiltration system that we have. The drywall that is immediately upslope from the final retaining wall would be an additional measure that would intend to capture any additional runoff and infiltrate it into the ground instead of flowing over the new retaining wall. The drywall would have a beehive grate installed over the system. So, we had presented that, the concerns that were raised, not only during the last hearing, but certainly what we heard from residents located behind the property, and asked our engineer to specifically try to address those concerns with this design.
Would you please provide me a copy of that?
You can, you can have this one.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll pause there for any questions from the board, or if there's any additional information you want us to show with respect to the site.
So, I just wanted to confirm that the added property is going to be sold as two separate condos?
That's correct.
And can you also confirm that the four parking spots up, up top are for the added condos, and the three parking spots under are for the existing property?
Right, so, I mean, top of screen, bottom of screen, but pretty much all the same level. So, there's a bit of a slope that goes down, but it'll level off for where the parking space, with slight, slight slope in the parking area.
But yes, four units, four parking on the upper part of the screen for the two new condos, and then the three for the existing condos.
Which, which do not exist today.
Can I ask if we can hear from those who are wishing to speak for public comment? Would that be okay with the board?
Yeah, yeah, council, would you like to say a few words?
I'm sorry?
Leo.
Oh, I apologize.
Different counselor.
Leo Robinson, eighty-three Warren Avenue. I'm an abutter, and I'm here representing the neighborhood. Actually, I want to address some of the issues here that they're talking about. Pursuit to section thirty-four A, no lot on which a building existing or erected shall be altered, or no structure shall be rearranged so to as to increase nonconformance with this ordinance. This proposed development fails to meet the reference standards, the conditions that they relate to in a variance in section thirty-four two-thirteen C, the four things that they would have to satisfy. It's not a unique parcel. We have questions about the density. The neighbors are not interested in the project. It's not a hardship. It's detrimental to the neighborhood. And as you go to permits and relief, minimum lot size, they need a variance. Minimum frontage, they need a variance. Minimum side yard, they need a variance. Minimum usage in open space, they need a variance. Minimum side yard, they need a variance. Parking location, they need a special permit. Minimum frontage, they need a variance. Minimum height, which is only thirty-five feet, they want to go to thirty-nine five, they need a variance. Minimum stories are three, they want to go to four, they need a variance. Minimum side yard, they need a variance. Minimum side yard, they need a variance. Parking location, they need a special permit. Parking size, they need a special permit, and also the width of the parking, they need a special permit. There is inconsistencies between the petition and the plan sheets. The petition states that the unit in the new building lot will contain three bedrooms. However, the floor plan shows eight, four bedrooms in each. Why are seven spaces proposed for two-unit building where only four are required? What is the proposed height of the proposed retaining walls? What, what is the grade of the proposed open space of lot B? And what is the purpose of the proposed access easement shown on lot A? Those are our questions from the neighborhood.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Clark. I live at seventy-three Warren Ave. I live about diagonally from this property. I have resided there with my family for twenty-nine years, unlike this homeowner that came in purchasing this property, was a little bit more than a year ago, because I think if you remember, we were here about two, three years ago on this same property. So, I don't know how we could have been here if we only owned it for a year. But I'd just like to bring up some comments that were made to the specific petitioner at our last meeting before this planning board. And one member specifically had asked him, have you ever approached the abutters about this property? The response was no. So, the board member said, so basically, you're coming here to us, never approaching the neighbors, but asking us to steal their neighborhood from them. When we were before the zoning board, the first meeting, council went up and asked for a continuance, specifically to go and address the neighbors. We came back a few weeks later. As I stand before you tonight, they have not been to any door, giving anyone any explanations. They come here, just as the last time, they give excuses, they say things that are not accurate. When I tell you that, I had presented, which I'm sure may have been in the record, but may not be before you, about the trash. This is an absentee landlord that does not care nor monitor what goes on in his property, but we, the neighbors, have to face every day. He is the third house as soon as you enter the street on the right-hand side. It's a one-way street, so you cannot avoid driving by his property. When I had presented pictures of trash overflowing, filling on the streets, council responded, well, I don't know when those pictures were taken. I believe we were before the zoning board, maybe the first week of June. So, I'd like to show you the pictures that I presented to the zoning board, that he argued back, I don't know when they were taken, and I'll give you two additional pictures since the zoning board, trash spilling all over the street, but these are time-dated and stamped, that have happened again since we were at the zoning board. Because again, he's an absentee landlord, I believe he hires someone to come by on Thursday afternoon and put out the trash. However, the neighbors take the trash barrels back in, the tenants, but they leave all the trash spilt on the street. So, if I can approach just to show you these pictures, time-dated and stamped? So, these were the first ones, and then the argument was made, and this is additional. Another issue we have is the tenants, which I'll show you. There is a telephone pole that stands directly right in front of the property, and it's being proposed that we're going to have a driveway, although they say a slight slope. I'll also show you a picture of that, so you can see the incline of the driveway. But the question is, I'm sure there's legalities on how and if you're able to move a telephone pole and, and adjacent to the current property in the driveway. So, I'd just like you to look at the location of the telephone pole, and you'll see there's not much width to not only put a driveway, but also a structure, that this telephone pole is not going to obstruct the property. And it's funny how he mentions the greenage on the property. Do you remember a few minutes ago how he said we're going to be replacing it? Well, the amount of greenage that is currently the way that the property sits is the only green space that we have on the whole street, because for twenty-nine years, this has been just green space. So, I'd just like you to see the amount of green space that he... So, I'd just like you to see the amount of green space that he's removing, that he will never be able to replace with the property going. So, as one of my neighbors had mentioned when he was here last, unfortunately, he had a previous engagement, he wasn't able to be here, this has always stood as a side yard. This is not a buildable lot, this is not, you know, an enormous parcel. If you look and see the amount of variances, 10 variances, five special permits, does that not echo out to you? This project is enormous for what you're trying to put there. It, it's, I'm sure it's not an everyday occurrence that a property owner needs that amount of grants, permission to put a parcel. He also mentions that the neighborhood is going to be improved with the drainage. It's funny he say that, because behind me, two years ago, 115 Summit Ave was converted to a duplex, so it's now 115, 113. And they did that exact same thing with the drainage and, you know, buried the hole in the hole and it's supposed to seep out, well, you know where the excess drainage goes to? When it's slowly sleeping out, it goes into my paved yard, that I have an in-ground swimming pool, so as we're sitting in the pool, we're watching all the water flow into my yard, because that's what was buried on, for that property. He also mentions that we're going to have improved parking. Just two doors down from that, excuse me, three doors, we have 70 Warren Ave, which is a 32-unit parking lot. Again, it's on the same slope, because we're all up on the hill, so all those properties on that street go down to Prescott Ave. And there's, all of the neighbors refuse to park in that parking lot in the winter because of the slope and their concern slipping on ice and landing in somebody's car. So, how are we going to improve in a neighborhood? You have parking, but no one's, everyone's afraid to park there, and the neighbor behind is not going to have a car come through her backyard. Because I had a car come through, we had a call Christmas Day for 115 Summit, came down the hill and almost ended up into a neighbor's property for the same reason. So, I'd just like you to listen to the concerns, hear us. We are homeowners that are, every day, in the neighborhood, maintaining our properties, we care about our neighborhood, we're staying there, we have history there. When everyone else chose to flee Chelsea years ago, 20 years ago, when you couldn't give property away in Chelsea, we all stayed. But now, how the times change, when Chelsea is quote-unquote "the place to be" and all you do is have contractors and absentee landlords wanting to come in to further destruct people that live in the city and choose to be in the city. He's only here, as he said, "Build this property, put money in his pocket," and he's leaving town, just like now. He collects his rents from his tenants and he don't care what happens, he don't care that we have to face his trash in the streets. We have to see that, not him. So, I just ask that you please, please consider the residents that have contributed and consistently contributed for history of years to this city and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm William Clark, I live at 73 Warren Ave, my, my better half. A few years ago, we had some water problems. Where we put our wall in the back of our house, we own a property going up, so we were getting water in the cellar, in, in our basement apartments. We had people come in and tell us what was going on. Well, what's going on is the water has to go somewhere, so we put a wall along our property. At that time, we had an engineer come in, we wanted to go far, far back, we, we live on a slope, just like this gentleman has a slope. The problem is, when you build that slope, you're going to take away all those trees that are behind those people on Prescott Avenue. Those trees are what holds up that hill, that's exactly what he told us when we did ours. If I go too far back, take all those trees down and all those roots and everything, eventually that wall is not going to hold, hold up, it's just going to fall down and we're going to lose our property. So, we had our, we had ours done. When the water comes down, when the spring overflows on the street, you can see the sidewalks. If you go on a real cold day in the winter and it's raining, the next day, if it's below zero, 20, 20 degrees, below 20 degrees, you'll see where the sidewalk comes up. And when the water comes up, it cracks all the sidewalks, it cracks all the driveways. We've had the sidewalk done a five hours twice, I've had three driveways. So, when the water comes down, where they're going to put that property, where's that water going to go? If there's a property, if there's a property put down there, all that water's going to go, this guy's basement, this gentleman's basement, the people down, down at the bottom of the hill. What I would like us to do is go there and Prescott Ave and look and see how the slope is. He's going to have to build humongous walls to stop the property from falling over and destroying everything that's there. And like my wife said last time, up at 115, the car came right through, right down into the yard, because it's, it's, the slope is so bad that the ground weakens and it weakens as, as, you know, as time goes by. We're not going anywhere, we live here, we're not, I've been here my whole life, I was born here, I ain't going anywhere. But I don't understand why they want to come in and ruin our city, ruin our streets. And another thing is, this young lady said about the, the housing, they're not interested in the low-income housing, they want to get their money and get out the door, then you'll never see them again. So, 10 years down the line, this house that's there has a problem and the people down on the bottom of the hill in Prescott Avenue, they have a problem, he's, is he going to be here? No, it's going to be up to us. We just want to keep our street the way it is. It's very nice, we have plenty of people living on it, there's parking for everybody, but if you're going to add a four-bedroom, four-bedroom, you're going to, you're going to need more than parking for four cars. If you have a four-bedroom, everybody owns a car, there's four cars right there, same with next door, same with the guy, you know? So, I just don't think that, if you should go look at the property from Prescott Avenue and you tell me that you think that, do you think that, that the slope is going to hold all those cars? Eventually, that wall's going to lean, lean, lean and fall down. And it's going to ruin everything, it's going to ruin the people's property down at the bottom, the drainage problem, we just don't want it. You know, we got the apartment building, we're pretty happy with that, like my wife said, nobody wants to park down there because of the slope. We just want to keep our neighborhood safe, nice, and not have any more problems. We've been living there too long to go through this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, John.
Are there any other neighbors who wish to speak or speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm not going to get into the debate back and forth, but I think there's three issues that we did hear about, parking, trash, and the drainage. For purposes of this hearing, we feel that those issues can all easily be addressed by what we're proposing. The plan that was submitted by RJ O'Connell, notwithstanding, you know, the comments that what might happen, the speculation of what might happen if this, this gets built, I mean, certainly this will be built in accordance with all of the requirements of the state building code, uh, under the direction of an engineer, uh, I think all of the speculative concerns about putting retaining walls and drainage in, uh, we didn't hear anything to rebut our plan, uh, with respect to what we're proposing, so I, I don't know that those are really founded. I certainly understand they don't want it, they're very clear that they don't want the development, we get that, um, but I think it's a little odd to be stating that, you know, this will cause bigger problems with parking or bigger problems with, um, drainage. The trash, I'm glad, uh, the previous speaker brought up the trash, currently, the three-family dwelling doesn't really have any location for its trash because of the slope of the land, it's very difficult to get the trash, uh, up to the front of the property. That will be addressed by, uh, by the modifications that we're proposing to the rear of the property, there will be dedicated trash storage for the three families, so that issue also goes away, and I probably should have raised that earlier. With respect to the parking, we did hear the concerns about other properties and issues that they may be having. We're proposing four parking spaces for a two-unit building, that is the required number of parking spaces that's necessary for a project of this size. But we are also proposing three spaces, which we're not even required to do, to address those parking concerns with respect to the existing three-family, so that three-family will then have access to that parking as well. I, I'll, I'll let the engineering report and the, the plans for the drainage speak for itself, this is one of the reasons, uh, why we did not, uh, conclude our meeting last time, so we were working with RJ O'Connell to address all of these same concerns that we've heard at the previous meetings about what will this mean for the buildings and the properties behind us, on the street behind us. We spent a substantial amount of money with RJ O'Connell to come up with that plan and we feel that, uh, with their reputation and their, uh, understanding of the conditions and what, what could be used to mitigate those concerns, um, we feel that that drainage plan, uh, adequately addresses those concerns and certainly should address this board's concerns as well. So, again, I'm happy to address any comments or questions to the board.
I have a comment. One of the comments that we made was that you were supposed to contact the neighbors. I understand that it's hard when neighbors are so adamantly against a project, but that was one of the biggest conditions that you guys seem to completely have ignored, not even addressed, didn't even hold one meeting or even one conversation with any of the neighbors. I understand that, that their engineering abilities have improved, but the trash in the back of the building has to be moved to the front of the building unless you're getting, uh, a compactor back there or dumpster, which won't be able to get down the driveway, so I seriously doubt that those, that it's nice that you have a place for the people to put the trash bins, but sooner or later, those bins are going to have to go up that ramp, which is very steep and going to be very difficult and there's a prob, you know, they're big and they're bulky and when they're loaded, they're heavy, I know, because I move them all the time. So, I, I, I have concerns that, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that you did the engineering work, I appreciate the fact that you just, but I do not appreciate the fact that one of the conditions that we said was to talk to the neighborhood, particularly when the president of the city council lives in that neighborhood, to completely ignore their concerns or, or completely ignore our request for you to have, to talk to the neighborhood.
I, I respectfully disagree about, with respect to Council Robinson, I believe there was an attempt to have outreach prior to the first hearing and we were basically, I'm sorry.
Nope, I don't care if there was an attempt, I wanted a result. I don't want you to make a phone call, I don't want you to make an email, that is, that is, you know, you, it, it isn't like they're hiding, it isn't like they, they don't know where they are, this was something that the board vehemently requested, as well as the engineering, and you, you did all the other stuff that we wanted, you just didn't do the stuff where you would get yelled at by the neighborhood.
Well, I, I, again, I will respectfully disagree through the chair, the, the-
I'm not the chair, he's the chair.
Through the chair, I'm respectfully disagreeing with you. I, I think that the outreach that was initially made to Council Robinson, uh, he was too busy to actually meet with my client and that is something that was communicated. There were additional conversations or comments that were made the last time around from some of the prior speakers here, that they will never support this proposal if my client's involved. There was a subsequent attempt after the first hearing for my client to go visit one of the prior speakers, she was told, she told him she didn't want to talk to him. So, I, while we can make the efforts, we can't guarantee a result, and I certainly respect and understand the concerns, and I understand the issue about the trash, we're proposing, uh, uh, items that are included with this plan that would address that. Uh, we just want to get back to your comment about that it'd be very difficult to have the trash. Uh, it's difficult now, because we don't have that driveway that the, uh, the design of that driveway will actually decrease the amount of slope, will allow for easier access to the back of the property, which doesn't exist today, and I agree, having the trash in the front of the house is not optimal, we agree. But that's something that makes it a lot more difficult, that if we're going to place the trash in the back of the property now, you'll never get it out of there. So, that is something that we are committed to doing as part of this project, we've raised that at the zoning board as well, uh, but I think the other issues also have to be considered, that the parking, with respect to the three-family, uh, that's not required, is being incorporated and the substantial amount of cost for the drainage is also be included, so, again, I respectfully disagree on that.
Yeah, and, and one thing on the trash, you know, we heard loud and clear from the neighbors when we presented originally, that the trash was not being properly handled by our tenants, and since then, we've had a trash service that comes to take out the barrels and put the barrels back, they come at night and then they come back the next day, and that same type of service would continue with these properties, so they would handle the, the bringing of the barrels up to the street, cleaning up and then bringing them back behind the property. Typically, they do a wash of the barrels, uh, once a month, and then if there's any holes from, uh, that would allow, um, for rodents to get in, they replace the barrels. So, that's the trash service that is currently at the property, but we just don't have a, a good spot to store it, so that will be vastly improved, um, and the same trash company will still be, uh, on this property.
Can you walk us through the, um, retaining wall around the property? I, I'm trying to get an understanding of how high and how robust that is, it needs to, I, I don't see any sections through it.
Yeah, so, one of the original things we had was, we actually had the parking run all the way to the back end of the property, so there was, I believe, six or seven spots that were going to go all the way to the back. What that was causing was a 15-foot retaining wall, right? And that was going to be very disruptive and it would have been, you know, very, wouldn't have been good for the neighborhood, for anyone. By changing the parking and bringing the three spots over to behind the existing three-family, we were able to keep that large space where the existing tree line is in the back of the property, and then we were able to do two small retaining walls stepping up to the parking, and in those retaining walls, we have ballards built in, so if there is a slippage of a car, right, there are, I believe, eight ballards, one, two, and then on the side as well, um, 10 ballards that we're going to be putting in to ensure that no cars go all over the edge. Um, and, you know, we've built these, you know, many times before, I think with the drainage syst, this is a very complicated process, lots of drainage work, lots of cul-de-sac tanks, big, you know, retaining walls that take a lot of engineering, but all of that will be done to code and ensure that it's safe. And I think that this can bring two great homeownership units to the neighborhood, I know the neighbors don't want anything here. When I looked at this property, when it was originally proposed, there was the extra lot to the left, it has, it's now one lot, um, and I was like, "This is a two-family zone, this is a great place for a, a two-family, uh, for two condos that people could live." Um, you know, we didn't want, there was no, uh, we didn't want to anger the neighborhood, we just felt that it was a good place for, for people to be able to live and enjoy the, the community, and I think that that's what we're trying to do here, um, and I hope you guys agree.
I would, I would add that there's no, obviously no displacement either with respect to the existing tenants, so the existing three, three-unit building that is tenanted currently, uh, nobody's displaced by this project.
This is a question for John. If a petitioner comes in and says that they're going to turn a structure into condos, is that an actual assurance? Or can they just end it, end up turning it into something else?
The application is for a residential unit.
Okay. So, condos as opposed to-
Well, as far as the board concerned, they are residential units, whether they're condos or rental is not an issue to the planning board or the zoning board.
Okay.
Case law has said that you, you, it's the use that you're looking at, not the form of ownership.
Okay.
Through the chair, there may be a comfort level I can add to your question, um, the intent is for condos, these are not intended for rentals. Uh, once these are submitted and, uh, built as condos or master deed is recorded, it is, uh, not impossible, somebody could deregister this or both units could deregister it, but what it would require is, uh, once these are sold as individual units, there's separate mortgages on each unit, it'd be quite cumbersome to deregister it and then make it into a rental, uh, because you'd have to have one owner of both units and it wouldn't necessarily, probably be the most financially feasible to do it that way. So, uh, the intent here is condo, uh, the quality and the design of the building is for condo, so, uh, these, these are intended for homeownership.
Thank you.
Are you going to address the comments raised in, uh, the department report?
Um, I, I know there were some questions, John, about the discrepancy on the plan, I think we've updated those. Uh, one of the first was about the seven, though, I think there was a plan submitted showing the seven, uh, this is the plan, it's consistent with the RJ O'Connell plan as well, so we did have the, um, the landscape, um, design team go back and redraw this with that. Um, I'm not sure, there was a question on the, um, engineering for RJ O'Connell, I think we provided you their response as well, as to what will happen with the, um, remaining infiltration and how that would work through the process.
Will the plans be updated to show that?
I, I believe, so we asked, that's what we had asked RJ O'Connell to give us, is that- I believe, so we asked, that's what we had asked RJ O'Connell to give us, is that based upon the plan that's submitted, that's included. And I can have him put it a little bit further into a narrative on the plan, to maybe identify those bullet points as to where they would be. But he says there's no further update necessary in the plan, the plan does incorporate everything that's in those comments.
Well, the DPW wasn't certain of that. They mentioned that there are drainage plans, drainage pipes that end and do not connect to other structures, so that's what they were looking for.
Yeah, we sent that specific comment that you, I wanted to clarify that, I know you and I communicated by email, that specific comment was sent to Brian, and that was the response that came back. So I think he addresses that. I think the question was whether or not, when it gets sort of to that endpoint, what happens? I think there's two infiltration systems, and then there's sort of a residual, sort of last stop catch, and that's where they're, that's where they're getting it.
I will send the response to DPW, whether they feel it's adequate or not is up to them.
Sure. And we asked RJ O'Connell to consider that, and I believe that's, that their response, I believe, is adequate.
Then looking for a true landscaping plan, lighting plan.
With species, yeah.
Also, I, my report asked for the height of the retaining walls. Ms. Rich asked for the height of retaining walls, but I've not heard the height of the retaining walls.
Original, I think we were...
Originally, they were 15, now we're looking at 2.5.
All the retaining walls are at 5-foot height from the, from their base.
From the base.
Yeah.
And the step, stepping them down was able to eliminate the total height of 15.
Understood that. So you will be required to put a fence at the top. Our building department requires fences for anything over four feet in height.
Is that, there's a limitation on the fence height, correct? Because we can't be over eight feet.
No, I mean, any retaining wall over four feet, they're going to require a fence for safety.
Forty-two inches, it's not higher than 42 inches though, right?
I'll have to ask.
Yeah, I think it's 42.
I'm seeing in the comments that the proposed height is 39 foot six, but the drawing, say 35 feet, what's most accurate?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The proposed height, the height restriction is 35 feet. Can't you work within that height restriction? The question is, I mean, it says 35, 39 foot six in the...
So yeah, so I think it's with the sloped lot, if you look at the rendering, if we click through, you'll see that we're actually just a two-story on the street side, but then because of the slope into the rear, that's where you're getting our large height. If we were to drop it down lower, it would almost be a one-story on Warren.
How does it compare to the existing structure?
It's, it's the same or less than the existing structure, yeah.
We could jump to the rendering. I'm sorry, pressure call.
Is this the one you're looking for?
Yes. So two, so from the street side, it's going to view as two and a half stories, very similar to the height of, to the existing three unit. But from the rear, we could see those in the dimensional elevation, the one-dimensional elevations, John. I think that's where we're picking up the height. If you can jump back to the elevations. Yeah, that's probably a good one. So left side of the building, you know, seeing the slope from the street down.
Right, so if you look at the front side, you would be easily compliant.
Please, please take the microphone.
See, if you look at the Warren street side, we would be well in compliance on height, but then when you drop at the slope into the rear, we gain this extra, you know, 10, 11 feet, and that's what puts us up to 39. We would, in the front, we would be closer to 29. So that's what you'd see from the Warren street side.
I mean, if there weren't a case for the shape and topography of the site, you know, that says that that's the purpose behind it, but, you know, the intent, I believe, is to have, you know, some uniformity of design and architecture along the street, and we're pretty consistent in the height.
Is it the mean grade, John? What is, remind me that what the...
The height is measured as an average.
Okay, but if you're sculpting the land, then how does that, is it the existing conditions that they're...
No, it's, it's the proposed conditions.
I mean, we, we could increase grade, but it probably doesn't, it probably doesn't hurt the parking.
My concern was that it doesn't loom over the neighboring structures.
Yeah, I think, look from, from the rear, you know, if we look at the photo of the existing three family, you can see, you know, it has a similar slope to the rear, so it's consistent both for the rear of that building to our right, as well as the front, in the same height, because that does drop off in the back as well.
So there's clearly some concern about drainage and potential flooding for butters. Not sure if this is an option, given slope, but can you instead do some kind of gravel driveway instead of asphalt?
So I'll just, I think the first, yeah, the first issue, I've dealt with the gravel driveways in New England many times. It does present a challenge for snow removal and for ice. So when that, winter conditions do occur, it does present, especially with the slope, they do tend to work a little bit better on flat ground. You can, you know, still with the snow and the ice, but with the, with the slope, it's a little bit more difficult. But we'd asked the engineer to consider that in its design for the drainage, so even, you know, the slope of that driveway and the pavement that we're using has all been taken into consideration for how that system will manage it, and that's one of the reasons why we do have some of the redundancy that's built in. If not redundancy, even an extra layer for any residual beyond the redundancy.
Yeah, one note on that, when I spoke to Brian Timm today and RJ O'Connell to review the comments, I was wondering why we had more than the two cul-de-sac tanks, which would kind of be standard on this, and though, he just wanted to go to that next level with the design, with that trench and as well as that drywall. So those are two extra steps he's taking to really work on this runoff and make sure there's no problems. And so he was very confident when I spoke to him today in the design.
I want to hear from my fellow board members.
I'm not sure if I'm obsessed with this project, based off of the fact that, like, they look really close together, and there's this tiny driveway in the middle. I know it's the way the land is, but I think that's my one comment. If the front rendering, John?
If you can jump back to the site plan through the chair. I apologize, so the renderings unfortunately sometimes don't get perfect to scale on location. We're trying to obviously scale the building with the building next to it. The driveway width, if we go to the site plan, is it 12, 12 feet? Yeah. So I believe a standard driveway is typically 10 feet, and I think we're maybe one more back. Maybe go one more back. I think we're at 12 feet for driveway, so it even says tad wider than what a typical driveway would be. And then we do have our building, the building setback on the, on the right side from the property line.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, I do understand the board's concern, you hear neighbors complaining about a project, and, you know, we certainly have to address that back before the Board of Appeal, I'm sure, but I think for purposes of what the charge here is, you know, we're focusing on the items that we understood as being the important issues, when it dealt with parking, site, and drainage. And I think we've at least put forth a compelling enough case that we've addressed the concerns, at least from what the board's previous comments were the last time we had to go around on this.
All right, so I totally understand that the structure isn't in compliance, but I would appreciate input from, from the crowd on how it's actually going to impact their properties. So can you share some specific input on specific impacts?
Well, I think the question is, it's not asking for one variances, it's asking for 10 variances and five special permits. I mean, I know they have a right to come before the board, but I think it's up to the board to make a decision whether or not this is appropriate for the neighborhood, and does it fit the neighborhood? All right, we're talking about a street that people have owned the property for 25 years or better. It's not against that work that the neighbors are against development, it's just that the shape of the land is not really suitable for this type of building. And they keep saying it's about a two-family, but you're talking about four floors of living space. And then at one point, it says three bedrooms, and at another point, it says it's going to be four bedrooms. So four stories of four bedrooms. You have to ask yourself, what are we getting as a neighborhood?
Unfortunately, I think that's a question that should also be presented to the residents of Prescott, specifically because they are the ones that are going to be immediately impacted, having to look out their window and see four stories, however high. And again, this is a property that there was never a structure there. So you picture yourself living in a home for 40-something years, never having anything obstructing, and then all of a sudden, you have a parcel that's not only squished into a piece of land that's too small, but it's how high? And I'd just like to, you know, they keep pushing this driveway, and you had a question about the barrels and the compactor being able to get down in there. Well, when a plow comes, you go down the driveway and you push the snow. Where's the snow going to go? Because you can't bring the snow back up the driveway and put it in the street. So is that going to be putting more pressure on this wall that's protecting the Prescott neighbors? I mean, if we have feet upon feet upon feet, like we did a few winters ago, it was, you know, snowing every other day, 12 inches or more, the snow is going to be so high built up, again, taking spots from the quote-unquote "seven" that are going to protect the neighborhood because you're going to have to store the snow. It's eventually going to go over the top of that wall and end up on the Prescott Ave property, because there's only so much you can hide, you know, put snow and pack it up before it's going to be over the top. So I really think, you know, they're not given that opportunity, and I'd like to vouch for them, because I have the same slope just adjacent to me, theirs is coming down to me, just like this property would be going down to them. And I am impacted. I was never addressed as in about approving this project. I now have water that comes in my yard that I can't do anything about. There's nothing I can do. Sit out there in the summer, and I just hear seepage coming through the wall. So I'd just like you to also consider the neighbors and the residents that have lived there 50-something years, one of them, who's directly behind this property, that unfortunately was not able to be there, but has sent in letters of opposition previously. Thank you.
Also, there's also, across the street is number 80, they're going to be putting a house there soon. We talked to the gentleman who brought the property, so he's going to put a two-family there, similar to the one that I have across the street. So if you put that there, then you put that humongous building in the middle, you're not going to have any space in between the houses. It's going, it's just, it's, it's just a bad idea.
Amongst, do you have a site plan of the greater context amongst the visuals that you have provided?
Yeah, if you go to the street view shot, you'll see that, I know the neighbors, these, most, these butters live across the street, so if you look at our parcel, all to the left of us, there's the existing three family, there's this lot where we're proposing, and then there's a long stretch of open land. There's an old foundation on it that's, that's just been sitting there, and so if you, if you go back a few, I think there's a photo in the, in the slide deck, John. John, in the slide deck, you can...
Well, I was going to go, I was going to go to the...
Yeah, that works.
For this property?
I'm sorry, what?
You don't have...
I do.
Sorry, John, I don't want to put you in the spot. I think you just need to see the surrounding...
Sarah.
Yeah, so if you actually, if you scroll up, up, it actually kind of shows you the, keep going, on the previous image.
Map.
So yeah, so this is the, right, so this is the current, where the parcel is. These are just two vacant lots, right? There's no butters to our left, these are just old foundations, I'm not sure if they burned down, or, but those are just, so we have no neighbors until we get to this large rental building on the left-hand side. And then, as you can see, this building ends right here. We've got the parking area, a yard, and then huge yards down to Prescott. So there's a significant rear setback, not only on our property, but down on Prescott. And I wanted to make one quick note on the snow removal. Our snow removal company that we use would never plow this site, they would always use an RV or a, a snow plow or shovels, and there's lots of space to place the snow around the site. So I can assure you that we wouldn't be using a plow on this site. And that would be part of our, our snow management plan that we would submit to planning.
He also, he says that where his property's going to be, there's the house that's supposed to be built, the lot number 80, but right next to 80 is 74, which is another single family. So it's not, there's not a vacant lot from there to the apartment building. It's, it's one vacant lot, the house was burnt down, and the gentleman that bought it, we talked to, he came to us and talked to us about putting a nice two-family there. And we said, that's fine, you know, it'd make, you know, he said he was going to not go crazy, make it look nice, and he was going to live there, which was even better, because if he's going to live in our street, you know, that makes it better for us, because now he's going to take care of his property. But you're talking, you're talking a four-bedroom apartment, which is, which is going to be four floors high. If it's a two-family, and you're going to have it four stories high, that's ridiculous. You know, and what's going to happen eventually in the winter, and I'm going to tell you right now, we've been there, we bought the house 30 years ago, whatever it was, those people are not going to park in that parking lot, just like the people in the building, they're going to park out in the street. And eventually, you're going to find it all over the place, people are going to be having problems, there's going to be argument, it's just, I know that the gentleman wants to build a nice house, I know he wants to make money, but this is not the place to come and make money. You just don't, it's like putting on a pair of shoes. You don't try to get your foot into a, you're nine, you know, you've got a nine-inch foot, you're trying to put it in an eight-inch area. It just doesn't work. It's, it's just, it's not suitable for the neighborhood. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the board, is there anything, I feel a lot of hesitation to approving this, what would it take for the board to approve this? Okay?
Hi, my name is Edwin Corrego. I live in 121 Nav, right next to the building they're proposing to build, this guy's right here. One of the things that I wanted to say is, far as actually, when they planning to have the drive-through, the drive-in down to this parking lot, the steepness of this park, I don't know if they're going to fix it or do something, but extremely steep. And it's kind of narrow, I think, actually, for anybody to go down, it's got to be a really, really, you know, a really good driver. Why? Because actually, it's kind of narrow, and the steepness of this thing is kind of really, really deep. And I worry actually, because if they do that... And it's kind of narrow, I think, actually, for anybody to go down, it's got to be a really, really, you know, a really good driver. Why? Because actually, it's kind of narrow, and the steepness of this thing is kind of really, really deep. And I worry actually, because if they do that, and I live right next door, I'm just actually at accident, you know, waiting to happen at any moment. Really, it is, especially in the wintertime where we've got the snow and all that. So I don't know actually, far as whatever actually they're planning to do and all that, but that really gets me really worried. Now, the other thing is, well, my neighbors, fellow neighbors that we're talking, far as actually the maintenance of the property. When I moved in about 10 years ago, actually, the owner of that property used to keep it in pristine condition. And right now, back of this property, current right now, is a forest down there, actually. The guy who used to own that property was a police officer for Chelsea. He used to clean up the whole thing, all the way to the back. Now, the other previous owner, especially this guy's right now, actually, they don't touch anything behind that. The thing is, what we're trying to bring up is actually the maintenance of this property not being taken care of, meaning actually, if they do own another property or they build another thing down there, probably it's going to be the same situation. So, you know, it's, it's just my point on it, and, you know, my concern. Thank you.
Question out of curiosity. Your average property on Prescott, say, from 60 to 82, are those places street parking, or is there a drive?
I'm not, I don't want to answer and speculate, a lot of speculation tonight. I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they are.
Because I'm afraid of setting a precedent that if we allow construction of an asphalt driveway on a, on a, on an incline, it'll create some other situations where people come asking for the same exact things, and all of a sudden, there's just like a giant slope of asphalt.
Yep.
And I don't think that's great for Chelsea at all. Because this place is in a pretty great situation where it's on top of a hill, but there's plenty of houses under. And I'm concerned about a precedent that creates a huge slope of asphalt.
Yep. No, and I, and I do understand that if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know we've been at this for a while, I'd just like to respond to a couple of items. I think the question from the member was, you know, how does this impact your property? And if they can give specific examples. I don't think we heard anything specific, other than the same issues that we've talked about addressing. So things like drainage, things like parking, things like all the impacts that we've heard about, all get addressed. And the last speaker talked about, you know, the overgrowth and the maintenance of the back of the property. Again, that gets addressed. If we are incorporating that drive area and doing all of the work that we're proposing for that drainage, that actually improves that back portion of this lot. I think my client had indicated about the snow, that's speculative. We have a system for this. This isn't the first property that he's been involved with that has this type of condition, where there's a method to removing snow. There's plenty of area around the parking area to address that, so that shouldn't be a concern. But to the point of how does it impact the neighborhood? The zoning allows for two-family, we're proposing a two-family. The zoning requires two spaces per unit, we're proposing two spaces per unit. Other than the other technical issues that go along with it, I'm sure we can find similar non-conformities with many lots in the area that are already pre-existing. But the real issue, I think, tonight is how did we address those concerns concerning this site? And, you know, this board is certainly, you know, capable of voting no recommendation, a recommendation, or to deny this. I think that would also be a bad precedent, because we've done an extensive amount of work and tried to respond to the board and the issues that we did here specifically. Complaints notwithstanding, we understand. They don't want to see this happen, they don't want to see this project. They have their opportunity to raise that at the zoning board, I think, but for purpose of the recommendation, we're asking the board to recommend this based upon what we presented here tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation to deny this project. A, it's just downright treacherous. When I looked at this the last time, I'm like, you know, sure, an engineer can come up with whatever you want and come up with, but that doesn't mean, you know, look at the submarine that we just witnessed, all right? It does not mean that that's a good idea. Now, the existing building and what was proposed there, it's reasonably handsome architecture. I mean, there's, it's not that it's being detrimental to the neighborhood from an aesthetic point, but I think there's plenty that you can do within your right on this lot that doesn't involve, you know, you can expand the existing structure, but I, I just feel like adding a driveway and all of these parking spots at the rear is opening a whole other can of worms.
If I may, I just ask one question. What would you propose that we do then? To address the concerns of parking, drainage?
I'm saying, don't turn it into a two-family. I'm saying, if you want to expand the existing structure, that's a different thing. And if you want to accommodate parking.
Yeah, but that's not the proposal.
And maybe, maybe you could. Right, so I'm denying what has been proposed.
Understood, based upon our comments that we heard from the neighborhood.
You've spent a lot of money on this, this is your lot, you're entitled to do something. But I think this was overly ambitious for this particular lot. And yes, it's a challenging lot. But even that considered, I just, I think this is putting a square peg in a round hole.
And we were specifically asked through the chair to address the specific concerns that we did address tonight regarding drainage and parking, and we did that. So while I do respectfully disagree with the board member that, you know, this is overly ambitious, this is precisely what was asked of us and to address it in a way that we feel makes the most sense. And I've not heard one party tonight rebut anything that we've presented with respect to the parking, the grade, or the drainage plan that we've put forward. I've heard a lot of speculation, I've heard a lot of personal attacks on the client, we get that, but there has been nothing that's been presented that would rebut that.
Well, if I was living at number 70 or number 66 Prescott, I'd be a little frightened.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
I said, if I was one of the rear abutters, I would be a little concerned about the future of my property.
Right, but you're not, so I don't know that that's relevant.
Because of the, you know.
But that was one of the, just so you know, again, I'm going to reiterate, one of the requests from the board was to talk to abutters, which includes people on Prescott Street. Now, I understand that this drainage plan is, I have some speculation about it. I understand that the driveway is steep. But you can, you did address most of the issues, you did address an important issue. So you can diminish it, you can play it down, but that was one of the requests that we requested last time you guys came. I'm sorry if you feel it was personally attacked, because that's not what anybody, I feel like, in this building was saying. But, you know, we requested this, you choose to make what I feel is a half-hearted attempt. Whatever, Sarah, so I, I understand you disagree with me, I get it. But that was one of the requests. We had four requests, one was drainage, one was parking, one was talking to the abutters.
I, I understand the city councillor is a big player and a big factor in this because he isn't an abutter. He's who we started with first, he is the one who led the charge opposing this last time. He's the one who presented the letters, the petitions, and indicated he represented a number of people. We started with him, he didn't want to communicate with us. I think the writing was on the wall as to what the reaction would be. So don't please, I just wanted to be clear, please don't say we didn't try to make that attempt, and please don't say it was half-hearted. We started with him, he's the councillor, he's an abutter. We were rebuffed, we were told basically he didn't have the time to meet with us. The message is there, we understand it, the neighbors don't want this, we get it. But that's not the reason to reject a pretty well-developed plan for the site. That's your purview and that's your, your opinion, so that's fine.
Okay.
I guess we just request, request a vote.
If I may.
Sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Of course.
First of all, he never spoke to me. His partner, who happens to know me, called me to ask me to meet with him. I said there was no happy medium here, you know, that the project does not fit in the neighborhood. And I stand by that today.
And excuse me, if I may, Leo Robinson is just one resident on all of the street. I just want to put that out.
We're going to have one person at a time speak calmly, and we're going to try and educate everybody here about what the issues are. But we're not going to have four or five people yelling all at the same time. Okay? No, I'm not, that's fine, I understand. I understand how it works. What we're going to do right now is we're going to give members of the planning board an opportunity to ask any questions that they have regarding the matter, and if they are so moved to make a motion. If not, we'll continue from there.
I think Sarah made a motion, does anyone second it?
I'll second it. I just think this is an egregious, I just think this is a super egregious, treacherous project. The community isn't in support of it. I, I think it creates a precedent of asphalt all on this, all, all on an incline, which is going to create flooding issues. I just, I just don't think it's the correct project and the correct spot. If it was a flat property, I think this is some other conversation. It isn't, it's on a hill, can't control it, I'll second it.
Would you repeat your motion, please?
Sarah made the motion.
I think Sarah goes first, then I'll go second.
I made a motion to deny.
And I'll second it.
Okay, okay, we'll give a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I guess my thing right here is that we, they came to the meeting in April, and we gave them some recommendations to improve their plans. And they came back and have improved their plans. Obviously, it's pretty, like, I don't know, like, the board, the board doesn't know, like, who has talked to who, who has tried to attempt to talk to anyone. That seems like out of our view. But at the same time, we did recommend them with the recommendations, and they have addressed those. So I don't understand why we are going to deny them today and kind of waste our time for the past few months. And money.
Okay, well, to be honest, I would have expected to see a section from, I mean, this, we're talking about topography here, and to not include a section drawing or a, do we have a civil engineer with us? Or drawing of the retaining wall seems irresponsible. That's, that would alleviate people's concerns.
It seems like we're looking for reasons to, it's okay to deny.
No, I'm, I'm not at all apologetic, I think the thing's just treacherous. I would not want to be in a car driving down that driveway, and maybe you can get an engineer to.
But clearly, we have to design this.
Assure that nothing's going to happen, but.
We have to design this to standards under the state building code and the requirements that for certain grade and slope for driveways, we can't just, you know, put a carnival slide in the backyard for cars. So clearly, that's an issue that can easily be addressed through the permitting process. And thank you for the comments about wasting our time, because while the concern or the mission or the errand was to go and have conversations with people, because they decided not to talk to us, does that make us not capable of at least putting forth a project that, you know, met the requirements and recommendations of this board? That, we were set for failure if, if it was to go talk to them and they didn't want to talk to us.
I wasn't sent to failure.
That's how it feels.
That's how it looks, but.
That's how it feels.
That is, that is only one of the reasons why I rejected this project. The other is that I do think that there are other, as Sarah said, other techniques that you can use. I think that driveway is going to be very difficult. Any driveway like that is going to be difficult. I also think having a four-story building, though I disagree with that there's, you know, you could make it smaller, you could make it lower, there's like, it is hard to build on a hill. I, I get it, and, you know, but there, there's other ways to be, to still have a two-family without having four floors. So it's mostly, some of it is, one is to, you know, the driveway, I think, is still a 12, a 12-foot wide driveway. If you have a car coming up and a car coming down, you're in for a big, you're in for, so somebody's going to have to back up. You're going to, somebody's going to have to back up, which is okay. I don't think that, that's another speculation. I think that's very rare, that rarely that that's going to happen. I think that might happen maybe once every year or something, but, you know, it's still, it's still a concern. There's, there's, we haven't even mentioned the safety of children, if there's children in this house and there's, and they're, and they're in that driveway. So there's, that driveway is very risky, and it is, it's so, there's a lot going on. But that's, it wasn't just because of what the neighbors are not meeting with you or refusing to discuss the project with you. That was some of my concern, but the other concerns were what I just addressed. So I don't want to leave you with the impression that it's just the neighbors against the project. But I'd say we're done.
Yeah, I guess a question for John, I guess what options do we have? And I guess what would be the next steps if we were to reject?
Well, the next steps are that they will go before the zoning board on July 11th, if I remember correctly. And the zoning board will, will vote whether to approve it or not. They will ask me what the, what your recommendation was, I will tell them. They will have to make their decision whether to take that in whole or in part, or to ignore it. It's up to the ZBA.
Okay, we do have a motion.
It's already, it was already made, seconded, and voted on. It was seven to one to approve the, to approve it, yes.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, those photos stay here, the photos stay here. I, I need, I need a copy of all the photos that were submitted.
I don't have any here, I think they're all with you.
Have they?
These are part of the record.
Okay, next order of business is case 2023-16 at 30 Hillside Avenue. 1511? Thought we did.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Nicole.
My mistake. Are they here?
Yep. David.
Okay, we're doing 511.
Yep.
My mistake, 2023-12 is 51 Library Street, and the petitioner is Pedro Florentino.
Good evening, board members and Mr. De Priest. I'm David Midland, representing the petitioner. I always have trouble lowering, I always have to lower it. With me are Pedro Florentino and Beth McDougall, who is the architect on this project. We were before the boards about a year ago with a proposal to construct a five-unit building at 51 Library. 51 Library now consists of several old garages and flat-roofed brick, single-family residence. John, can you show some of the photos of what it looks like now?
That's not it.
So while, while John is doing that, the original proposal, the boards both had some concerns about. about both the size of the building, the setbacks, windows facing the abutters. And we believe that the current project addresses all of those concerns. Who's that? So just very briefly, the building would be ground floor enclosed parking. Be seven parking spaces. Six are required for the building. But where the parking is enclosed and there are setback violations, some dimensional relief is required. We would still need a special permit for the parking. The second floor above the parking would be two, two-bedroom units. One would be 1,200-plus square feet, the other 900-plus square feet. And then the third and fourth floors would be two units, each being a duplex, each being on the third and fourth floor. Those would be...one would be about 1,800 square feet, and the other would be 2,000 square feet. Now, Ms. McDougal has been very creative. The parking level is a bit wider than the residential levels, so the apartments are actually set further away from the property lines in order to address some of the privacy concerns.
I'm sorry, David. I'm having trouble opening the material you sent me. For some reason, when I downloaded it, when you sent it to me, it opened fine. But as soon as I disconnect my laptop from the system, it won't open.
The new renderings I sent you today? The color ones? I have copies for everyone if we want to do it that way. Sorry, when we were before the zoning board, we realized that I accidentally sent the renderings in black and white. So I sent them to John, but I didn't need to go through. So may I distribute them or...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, thank you.
I guess I don't have them.
So as for...oh, here we are with the sideways renderings again. I was more...these are the renderings that are in the photograph and that I just handed out. If you could possibly find the photographs of the site as it presently exists, that would be helpful.
Well, I've got that in my department report.
There we are. So again, we have the garages here and a single-family here, driveway in the middle. It's not the most attractive lot in the neighborhood, to say the least. And Mr. Florentino is trying his best to improve it and put a nice project there that's within reason and will fit with the neighborhood. And Beth can go into more detail about the project and the design.
Where do you want to start?
Hi, I'm Beth McDougal. I'm the architect. What we've...what we're proposing is a four-unit building on Library Street, facing Library Street. What we did was we...there's like three and a half and three and a half foot setbacks on the side. That's only on the first floor. The first floor level is for parking. Okay, that one. So you would come in, and there are seven spaces inside with an elevator to the first floor unit and trash storage here. This is for egress out. But it's basically parking, and it's all enclosed. Can you rotate them? Yeah, I'm going to...
You want to rotate it the other way?
Yeah, can you rotate it twice? Go to view. There, that one. Oh, view. View. Rotate. Clockwise. Oh, you have to go back to the drawing.
Got to escape out of here. Go back to this.
Okay, just rotate it counterclockwise. There you go. Can you...okay. So can you go back up one more time? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is oriented correctly. So this is where you come in the garage, off of Library Street. Like I said, there's elevator...there's elevator room. We have trash storage here, entrance on this side. This entrance here is for the stairs that go up. The first floor unit on this side will be accessible. Couple more. And what happens is, we are now stepping back. So on...as you're looking at the front here, we step it back. I've actually stepped this back about 10 feet, right here. So this unit right here, which is accessible with the elevator, kitchen, dining, and two bedrooms, two baths. And they have a small deck here, and they have a small deck on the front. This unit on this side, as you come up the stairs, you go into a hallway, because the stairs are two-hour rated. You go into the hallway to this unit right here, which is a little smaller, two bedrooms, one bath. You take the left, and the handicapped or accessible unit is two-bedroom, two-bath. Go to the next one. On the third floor, as you're coming up, you would be cut...you come up the stairs. So what happens is, you've got the main stairs downstairs. It comes to a hallway, and you're going to go up. You go into the left and the right. Those are two units. These two units are two floors. We have living space. We have kitchen, dining, both sides. And again, this is the deck below for the unit below. This is this unit's deck, and then this is this unit's deck. What I've done is I've tried to make sure that the decks don't...aren't on top of each other, so it gives a little bit more privacy with the areas. And then if you go one more floor plan? So the top floor, you come up the stairs, and it's a two-bedroom, two-bath unit. So the units are two bedrooms, two baths, except for the smaller one on the first level there that has one bath. These are townhouse-type units with the private space on top, which are the bedrooms, and then the, you know, I call it the public area. When you have your friends over, they're all on the first...on the first level. So it's four units. Can you go up? There's not a roof deck. Go up. So if you look here, what we've tried to do, if you're looking at decks and stuff, so this is...so this unit is the accessible unit right here. They have some space on the front, and they have a small space on the side. This unit right here, which is a little bit of a smaller unit due to the stairs and stuff, it has a small area right here as a deck. This is where you enter the building. This Juliet balcony is actually the stairs that go up, because you're going up the stairs and you're landing right here. This deck right here for this townhouse unit is set back from this deck. And then this townhouse unit has a small deck on the front. This one has a small deck on the front, but it has more space on the back. So everyone has their own outdoor space. Everyone has private space. And everyone has a parking spot. Are there any questions?
Where do you put packages in mail?
Packages in mail would come in this door here. So if you go back to the parking garage level, John?
Also, it's in the parking garage.
Okay, so these stairs are going up, so there's a lot of space underneath. That's where we're going to put the mailboxes and the packages. So the postal service would have a key. You have to master key it, but we would master key it so that they could get into here.
And no bike racks?
We had bike racks. They disappeared. But yes, we will have bike racks. Bike racks, I don't know where they went. But we do have bike racks, yes. Because we can actually...the bikes can actually go here. We can still put trash there, or we can put trash here. We were kind of considering maybe not putting that door there, maybe putting it on the back side so that we could put maybe trash here or bikes there. But we...the one that we had at the office, I looked at today, had bike racks in it, so I don't know what happened to them here. But yes, we will have bike racks.
Are the...is it going to be sold as condos or rented out?
Right now, it's supposed to be...they're supposed to be sold, but, you know, depending upon how markets go. I mean, we're not really tied to selling them or renting them. But, you know, Pedro grew up here in Chelsea. I mean, he's from here, so he owns a bit of property here. Manages it, take care of it, so... But right now, we'd like to see it as, you know, condos for people to live there. With families.
What about snow? I know there's not a lot, but I was just curious, like, just in the front.
Yeah, there's not a lot of snow. And Pedro has a management company that will take care of all the snow removal, like sidewalk, stuff like that. And the only other place we have snow is really right at the driveway.
And are you guys thinking of putting some kind of sign or just say that someone's coming and going?
Yes, we're required to, yes. You need to activate to say the car's coming in or out, yeah. Yes.
So I think it's the third time I'm bringing it up today, but I see that the top of the structure is flat. So would you be comfortable with the condition that you either install solar or paint the...or paint the roof white?
Well, the flat roof would be have like a TPO, like a corralile TPO roof, and they're all white.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, very rarely. I haven't installed a non-white one in probably 10 years.
Oh, interesting.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And lighting?
Great to know.
Lighting for...
This seems to be an issue with lighting plan, maybe? So lighting on the outside?
You mean outside? I mean, we haven't planned on the lighting yet. We're going to put in the lighting that's required. I mean, the code does require lighting on the outside, yes.
This is a huge improvement.
The what?
Thank you. I know that was a significant change to the plans
Yes.
to create a greater setback.
Bring it in.
I feel like it breathes a lot more. You know, the building isn't as, you know, too large on the site, and it gives the abutters a little space from the base of the unit. So I commend you for changing that
Thank you.
setback.
Pedro Florentino. In the last meeting, the zoning board meeting, was it? Where we were two weeks ago. The...I spoke into all of the abutters. Tony on my left, and I forget his name. I think it was A on the left, I'm sorry, on the left, and then Tony on the right. And he was actually very pleased with what you mentioned, because right now, the garage is actually...are right on his property line right now with the setback. It actually creates more space for him. So he's actually very happy that...with this design. And with regards to being more green, we are planning to use many splits, which is all electrical for heating, cooling and heating as well.
And there are laundries in the unit. I didn't think I saw that.
Each unit has its laundry rooms, yes.
And where are you going to store trash?
Trash.
Clear in the diagrams?
Trash can either...the trash can either go here, or I think I want to move this door here, and the trash could go here. Trash or bikes? One of the two.
Okay. Thank you.
I brought up an issue relative to the parking space on the last...parking space on the left-hand side. I brought that up with the ZBA. How have we decided to address that?
So the ZBA had asked about this guy, you know, instead of, you know, a 16-point turn, they were saying, you know, why not go ahead and take out the cut? Which we can do. I mean, I have no problem adding more square footage. I would have to reconfigure like units and stuff like that, but that's okay. I mean, we can certainly do that. We can do that, and we can...these guys can go over. You know, keep in mind, this is 24 feet in here, so it's, you know, double, so you can get out. So if this comes straight across, what we were saying is that we could take this and push up, and we could put a car here and then leave that one open, because it's a little bit harder to turn around. And we could put bikes and trash there. I mean, we have multiple options for that. But that was the suggestion to extend that.
When the first space is handicap?
I'm sorry, what?
The first space is for handicap parking?
Yes, we would have it...well, this one out here is for handicap. This is only mechanical room. It's the room for the elevator. There's a small room. And then the rest of it's for the sprinkler system. So once we have, you know, all of our specifications, this will get laid out a little bit differently.
What's the timetable on this project? Do you have one?
Timetable? As soon as possible for him.
Yesterday.
Yeah. He would like to build it as soon as he could. Last year.
Is there any input from the community, audience on the project? I motion to approve the project with the conditions outlined as follows. The standard conditions as applicable, that the tenants are going to be ineligible to participate in the city's residential sticker program. A consistent set of plans, a drainage plan, and exterior lighting plan consistent with our sky standards, landscaping plan. And the parking space proposed against the back wall on the Easter...on the eastern side of the building is designed to allow cars to exit safely.
Could I clarify that that should just be a one-story addition, right? Or a one-story expansion, just the first one, yeah?
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And I'll second that motion.
My favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Good project. Yeah? Any wish?
Good evening.
Okay, twenty dash twenty-three dash sixteen, thirty Hillside Avenue. Nicole Dunn is the petitioner. Ma'am?
Just, just let me explain to the board that this did go to the ZBA at their last meeting earlier this morning to determine whether the change was major or minor. The board determined that the use was major, and they continue to a hearing in July. It's here before you to give a recommendation on the special permit.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Dunn. John, I don't know if you've got my little PowerPoint. So I am here for thirty Hillside Ave. I live at thirty-four Hillside Ave. I'm a direct abutter. The previous project, which was already approved, was a large four-story building, and I just wanted to give this little picture. So this is my bedroom window, and the reason why I put it up there is because if the previous project was built, it would be blocking the sun and the light, and also, a lot of my neighbors felt the same way. So just to give you guys a little idea of who I am, my name's Nicole again, and I'm from Chelsea. I'm third generation. My family owns a plumbing company here. I just had a baby. My family and I have lived here for over, my dad's from here, my grandparents are from here, so I'm here for the long haul. I love my home, I love my community, which is why I bought the project next door, because I wanna maintain the neighborhood. So the modification is to go from a large four-story, three-tier deck building to just the existing structure that is there now. So we are downsizing it just to exactly what's there now. But it's a six-bay garage currently. We'll be converting that to two studio apartments with garage parking. I'll get into like the floor plan and everything after. But, so this was the view of the last proposed approved project, and the project on the right is what I'm proposing, so I've downsized it quite a bit. So this is the floor plan. This is what the units will look like. Again, they're just studios, and then they will each have one parking spot, garage parking spot for each unit. So it's a bathroom, a kitchen, a little dining room, I'm sorry, a little living room, and then the bedroom. So just to give you guys some points to consider for why I'm downsizing, John, you can switch the slide. So the site is a particular site, it's on Hillside Ave, hence the name Hillside, it's on a hill. So this structure that's there now is a better fit for the site, which is why I wanna keep it the way that it is, instead of going forward and trying to build this huge house on a slope that's gonna be detrimental to all the abutters, not only me, but everybody on Hillside Ave. So like a lot of the people on Warren said, there's water runoff. When you start to take out trees and you do all these different things, you're creating a lot of issues, even though they have these great, you know, cult tech systems and different things like that, it really isn't gonna, you know, protect the abutters in the way that just leaving it well enough alone would do. As far as housing goes, the way that I came up with the two studios, again, my family and I own a plumbing company. We have seven employees, three or four have already been displaced out of Chelsea because they can't find housing. It's not even about the amount of money, it's just they haven't been able to find it. So I do know that we do need housing, because they're now having to go to Lynn, they're having to go to Revere, and then they're having to commute to work, and sometimes it's just easier to find work in your city if you don't have a car, et cetera. So I do know there's a housing issue here, so I'm proposing the two studios. This property is a large lot with a lot of trees. There's maple trees, there's pine trees, there's different shrubs. It's beautiful, there's cardinals, blue jays, there's a lot of wildlife here that would be disturbed if we took it all out and built this home. So I wanna keep that and be able to enjoy it with the other community members. And then the neighbor support, I've personally gone to each and every one of my neighbors. On Hillside, on Eleanor, I've sent, I've sent John the letters of support, and I have people here tonight, but a lot of the people that were previously opposed to the other project have supported this project, because it's just a better fit for them in general. So like on Eleanor, some of the people were, you know, opposed because they really enjoy the shade and the canopy type feeling that the trees give them, and that would be gone. So they were opposed to it. But now, it's gonna stay, and they love it. So I gave you guys a little example of a, a project that was completed in the same neighborhood, it's around the corner, but this is kind of the idea, so this is also two units with parking on each side. These have driveways, we'll have a garage. But this is just an example of what was previously a single-family ranch that was converted to two duplex-style apartments or condos. I'm not sure if those are condos. I'm gonna be doing apartments, so. But yeah, so that was just an example of something that was previously done, that's kind of what our look is gonna be with the ranch style. And then the next slide just addresses some of your notes that you had asked about when I got some paperwork back. I didn't know I was gonna come to planning, so I kinda put this together pretty quick, but as far as the outdoor lighting, we will be having the code-compliant lighting on the front and the back, the landscape plan. So this property is directly on the front of, there's not that much frontage here on this property, so, and then obviously, the back is a sloped backyard, so it's really already landscaped itself with the trees and the wildlife, et cetera. So I'll be, I live next door, I don't have a lot of frontage. I have a picture, I kinda make do with what I have to beautify it. I have window boxes, I have potted plants, so I just wanted to give you guys an idea. That's my house. Oh, and the trash, the trash will be stored in the garage. And then this is just kind of a summary, so my house is on the left, and I have potted plants, I have window boxes, and then this is an owl that sits in the tree on that property. Again, if these trees are taken out, the wildlife goes, and we really have such a great neighborhood here that in the inner city, we don't always see owls and different, you know, wildlife. I also wanna let you guys know, I'm a new mom, I have a three-month-old, if I wasn't passionate about this project, I wouldn't be here tonight, I wouldn't be going through all this. So I just want you guys to know that I'm here for the long haul, and I really appreciate your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have you thought about putting some type of green roof instead of a traditional roof? Since the building is already has a flat roof, have you thought about putting something like, so that you could have a garden up there?
So...
Instead of just, instead of just like solar panels or a white roof, I mean, it is, because there's only two people there, you could, you could put a access so they would have outdoor space?
So the, oh, and I wanted to add to, we will be adding a small deck in the back, and that is for second means of egress, because right now, there wouldn't be. So the, the open space would be back there, but to address the roof plan, I have abutters, I particularly kept the flat roof in order not to be detrimental on their property. So a lot of my abutters, this is a large slope, they're on Eleanor, we're on Hillside, so anything over what's already there really blocks the sun, if you can believe that, or, you know, just different things. So as much as I would love a rooftop garden for everybody, I don't know if it would be appeasable for the neighbors. But yes, I love the idea as well.
Yeah, I just love that idea.
I know, I do too. And it's flat, so it would be great, but just talking with the neighbors in general, and yeah.
Why did you decide to downsize it?
Just for the reasons that I mentioned, I'm right next door, so when I look out my window, I see the pine trees, I see like the beautiful setting.
But then why did you propose that in the first place?
What was that? Oh, I didn't, I bought the property. That was already here before the board from a previous owner. So he proposed this large project and then didn't wanna do it.
Gotcha.
So kinda just worked out.
Your neighbors must be thrilled.
I don't have questions, but I really wanna, can, what's the word? Express my gratitude to you being thoughtful and conserving what's already there.
Thank you.
It's a really interesting plan, but I, I question whether this is a major or minor change to the plan here.
Well, the zoning board already made that decision.
Okay, thanks.
So what, what's the non-conformance?
The non-conformance, I did the report.
Yeah.
I don't think I...
I know, I have it.
Aggregates width of the side yards, minimum lot size, minimum lot size per unit, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback. It's a change to non-conform, any change to non-conforming structure automatically requires a special permit, and then the minimum number of off-street parking spaces requires a special permit.
As far as parking goes, I kept the two garage spaces, which we feel is congruent with studios, because you're not gonna have a lot of people in there. But on top of the fact that we are providing two garage spaces, this is a large six-bay garage now, so it's a huge driveway apron, so nobody can park there. So if this is approved, I have to put the sidewalks in, like I, you know, have to hire the city to put the sidewalks in, so that will be creating four additional street parking spots on top of, you know, so I know that I'm not actually meeting the requirement, but I am providing more by having the sidewalk there.
If I may just go back to Jessica, your comment as to whether this is major or not. The board determined it's major because it required a different level of relief, and normally, that would go before the public for input, so they determined that it was major for that reason. It wasn't the amount of change, or I think it was literally the chance to give the public to make a comment on it.
Thank you.
Are there any architectural site plans or drawings? Because I'm not seeing...
There's a site plan.
Okay. John, could you please bring up the site plan, only because I don't think that I have it in front of me? Perfect.
Would you, what specifically are you looking for?
Yeah.
This?
No, he wanted the site plan.
Yep, this is great.
Yeah.
This is...
The first one? First one is just the, that's the existing conditions, right?
Yep.
All right, I'm probably gonna sound like a crazy person asking this for the fourth time, but are you comfortable with the condition to either install solar panels or, or, or uh...
She's not gonna have a flat roof.
Paint, it's flat.
It's pretty wooded there, isn't it?
Have a picture.
Oh. Is it flat?
Yes, it is.
It's flat now, but it's gonna be pitched.
Oh, it's currently flat and it's gonna be pitched?
Nope, so it's actually gonna stay flat.
So it is gonna stay flat, so we could potentially propose that as a condition.
So, like, like I said, we, I worked with the neighbors on this, and just any pitch at all to the roof, really, if, if you go to the neighbor's home and you look up, it's, you know, anything more to this building is gonna change their perspective a lot. So we're gonna keep it flat, and yes, I will take that in consideration, and I can, I don't think I could do the solar panels, just because like I said, adding that...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I would, I would do the garden if I could. So the white, I can, I can definitely have it white, though.
Cool.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve with the standard conditions as applicable, to add that the tenants of the building will be ineligible to participate in the parking sticker program, to provide a consistent set of plans, an exterior lighting plan consistent with international dark sky standards, and a landscaping plan.
I'll second that.
Should we add in a condition?
And a, and the condition that you'll consult with the city and provide some sort of a eco-friendly solution to the roof that is appropriate for the property.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. It's a wonderful project, the neighborhood should be so thrilled.
Thank you. My neighbors came to support, and they waited a long time, so I just wanna thank them for being here tonight, and, you know, I'm really happy and I'm thankful that you guys had time to listen to it.
All right, the vote has to be taken.
Oh, we did it already.
You made the motion to second it.
Yeah.
No vote was made.
Oh.
I don't think I said that.
We did vote.
Voted?
No. All in favor? I, I don't...
Yeah, we didn't vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
I need to write it down.
Good night, thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay. So we have two more things.
Okay, next is a public hearing for a zoning amendment to amend section three, four, zero, one, zero, six, J, to allow for the issuance of a visitor parking sticker, of a visitor parking stickers, to residential units that receive relief from off-street parking requirements.
You mean, you wanna make a statement?
Yeah, I, I propose this, because I live in one of those buildings. Basically, what we're asking is, if you can't participate in the parking, residential parking program, which I understand, they, you should be able to participate to buy a visitor pass, though it is the world's most complicated visitor pass in America, they should still be able to participate.
So this amendment was proposed early last year, and it did go before you for a hearing, and you did recommend approval as worded. It went back to the council, the council had some concerns about it, but, and essentially tabled it, if I remember correctly. So it was never brought forward for a vote by the council. Since it's been more than six months since they looked at it, it has to be presented again as new, so therefore, it comes to you for a, for a recommendation to the council. So basically, what it does is, the residents of any tenant, at any site that receives relief will still not be able to get parking passes on their own, but they will be allowed to get passes for visitors.
I think that's fine.
This is a public hearing.
Right.
Is anybody here?
Counselor, would you like to address this?
Actually, this was proposed when Roy was the president of the council, and eventually, he was voted on, and came to the city council, and we, we were never able to hold a public hearing, due to the fact, I think it was around this time last year, and when it came before us, and we were out for the summer, and then we came back, it was too late to hold a public hearing. So we had to resubmit it back to the planning board, few guys have voted on it, sent it back to us, and we'll move ahead and have the public hearing. But the issue is, is that the people who have condos, who are not entitled to the parking program, should be entitled to be able to get visitors parking for people who come to visit them.
Make a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll second it.
Second?
Yeah.
Your favor?
Yeah. All in favor? I, I don't...
Yeah, we didn't vote.
Aye.
Thank you, I, I just...
Thank you.
I need to write it down.
Sorry.
Good night, thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay. So we have two more things.
Okay, next is a public hearing for a zoning amendment to amend section three, four, zero, one, zero, six, J, to allow for the issuance of a visitor parking sticker, of a visitor parking stickers, to residential units that receive relief from off-street parking requirements.
You mean, you wanna make a statement?
Yeah, I, I propose this, because I live in one of those buildings. So basically, what we're asking is, if you can't participate in the parking, residential parking program, which I understand, they, you should be able to participate to buy a visitor pass, though it is the world's most complicated visitor pass in America, they should still be able to participate.
So this amendment was proposed early last year, and it did go before you for a hearing, and you did recommend approval as worded. It went back to the council, the council had some concerns about it, but, and essentially You all in favor?
Aye.
I don't see anybody here from the next two cases.
No?
Maybe we scared him off.
Well, it's also like, yeah, nine o'clock, honestly, after this, I think I'm gonna sleep here.
So, are we finished?
No, I think there's two.
Eventually, we're gonna have to. What? They're not here.
So don't we just bounce it to next month?
What?
Don't we just like bounce it to next month?
I recommend that you continue the next two cases to the next meeting. I'm recommending that you continue to the next meeting.
You're gonna try and continue the question?
Somebody, someone has to make that motion and second it.
Me, make a motion to continue.
Yeah, I did.
She did.
Well, you were chatting.
I'll second it.
Jessica second.
And you all voted, and you voted for both, to extend both cases?
Yes, continue both cases.
All in favor of sending both cases until next month?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. End the meeting so that Eric can...
Okay, somebody proposed, let's get the heck out of here. Is there trash? I'm keeping the doodles. There's some things I just love too much.
No, a motion has to be, did anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Who? Who made the motion?
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Eric made the motion, and Jessica second.
I'll second it.
Everybody voted in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.